...School's Board of Education meeting for February tenth, two thousand and twenty. Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Kastig? Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mrs. Adler? Here. Mrs. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Wallace?
Here.
Mr. Walter?
I'm here.
Mr. Schell?
Here.
Mr. Adler?
Here.
Seven present, we have a call.
Thank you. Would you all please rise and join me in the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Next up on our agenda is announcements. Mr. Wilson?
So all students must turn in their formative assignments from last week's Learning at Home Day to their teacher by this Thursday at noon in order to be, in order to not be counted as absent. If you have any questions, please contact your school's principal.
Thank you. Ms. Kastig?
Good evening. Young Authors. Thank you to Peoria Public School kindergarten through eighth grade administrators, teachers, and parents for working with students to submit their young authors entries. For the second year in a row, every building has submitted at least one entry, and many schools have increased the number of entries. Judges are looking forward to reading the creative work of our young authors and choosing finalists for each grade. Thank you.
Thank you. Hope?
The application deadline for graduating seniors for Peoria Public Schools Foundation scholarships is Sunday, March first. The Peoria Public Schools Foundation will present eighteen scholarships worth twenty-four thousand dollars to graduating seniors this year. To apply, go to www.ppsfoundation.org/studentscholarships. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact the Peoria Public Schools Foundation office at three zero nine seven one three three six zero eight or jennifer.adler@psd150.org.
Thank you. Ms. Ross?
Five Essential Survey. Parents and teachers, you have five more days to complete the Five Essential Survey. We need your input. If you need a computer or internet access to complete your survey, your student's school will have, will be happy to help you with that. The last day to complete the survey is this Friday, February fourteenth.
Thank you. Mr. Close?
President's Day. This is a reminder that Peoria Public Schools and district offices will be closed next Monday, February seventeenth in observance of President's Day.
Mr. Walter?
Boundary waivers. The boundary waiver application window is closing soon. The application must be submitted by Friday, February twenty-first. More information in the application can be found at www.poriapublicschools.org/boundrywaiver. Parent University reminder. You won't want to miss the next Parent University Thursday, March nineteenth, my birthday, at the Peoria Riverfront Museum. The evening will include dinner, planetarium shows, tours of the Peoria Sculpture Walk, movies on the Giant Screen Theater, the incredible Da Vinci exhibit, family activities, and information to help your students. Watch the district website and social media for information coming in weeks for more details and reservation instructions.
Thank you. Vice President Shaw?
The D squared information meeting. Attention sophomore, students, and parents, those who were unable to attend the D squared program informational meetings last week at the high schools from Peoria Public Schools and Illinois Central College can attend the final information meeting at the District Administration Building located thirty-two oh, thirty-two oh two North Wisconsin Avenue at five-thirty this Thursday, February thirteenth. Can't talk tonight. And progress reports. Progress reports for the third grading period will be sent out, will be sent home on Wednesday, February twelfth. Reminder to parents, you can keep up with your students' grades and assignments by logging into Skyward and even have text or voice, voicemail reports on your students' grades sent on a daily or weekly basis. Please log on to Skyward to make sure that your contact information in Skyward is correct. Thank you.
Thank you. The National Board Resource Center, or N B R C, is a nonprofit organization that has been charged with overseeing the Illinois State Board of Education program that enables teachers and counselors to become National Board certified. The N B R C provides payment for teacher candidate fees and support through the process. The Illinois National Board Candidate Fee Subsidy Application Window for teachers and school counselors pursuing National Board certification begins, beginning in the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one school year opens tomorrow, February eleventh at ten a.m. Go to nbrc.illinoisstate.edu for more information. And last but not least, I would like to thank the, our supporting schools here this month, Manuel and Treewin for decorating our bulletin boards and sharing some of their experiences and projects. All right, next up, we have our Community Contribution Award, and I'd like to call Ms. Gifford up to recognize this meeting's recognition.
Thank you. We'd like to recognize Hannah Galesworth from Dickblick's Art Supplies in Galesburg. She has worked to help contribute for the second year in a row now, thousands of dollars worth of art supplies into all of our schools, and the most recent donation being delivered last Wednesday into our warehouse, which is now facilitated across eighteen of our school buildings to help increase what it is that our students can do within their visual arts classrooms. So it's truly a game changer, and we're incredibly thankful and grateful for the partnership that's continued. Thank you. I just want to say that I'm glad that we were able to partner with the Peoria District and that we were able to donate the supplies. Lisa got ahold of us at the right time. We had plenty to donate, and she'll, you guys will continue to be on our rotation list for the donation list, so, program. Yep.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to call on Ms. Sonford to recognize a student showcase recipient. Or, Mr. Brook?
Good evening, President Adler, Vice President Shaw, rest of the board, Dr. Kratt. Tonight, I have the extreme privilege, privilege to honor three Manuel students who did a very nice act of, a random act of kindness in the month of January. So I'll have Jamari, Tristan, and Sean come up here. How's it going, guys? These, these gentlemen, at a basketball meeting, I think, I think it was a weekend basketball game at Manuel against Bloomington, came across a wallet from someone that had misplaced and dropped their wallet. Apparently, according to the Facebook post, there was a significant amount of cash in that wallet. And, you know, as a, as a result of Dexter O'Neal and Principal Devon Hawks, the owner of the wallet was able to find it several days later, and it was because of these three gentlemen right here who, who found it and, and turned it in. And it was a very, very nice gesture by them, and the, the owner of the wallet was very kind, he made a Facebook post about it. Think he gave you a little, little token of his gratitude as well, that might have come from that wallet as well. But we're just very proud at the, at the act of kindness, so we wanted to single them out tonight and give them a recognition. So, thank you very much, guys.
I just want to shake hands. I've heard a lot about it. It was so significant, too. So.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
In order to keep Dr. Kratt's step meter going, we'd like to bring her forward to share the most improved attendance from January.
I've not accomplished my goal today. I had jury duty, actually, believe it or not, conducting my civic duty. Yeah, thank you. This is actually a nice piece that I enjoy doing once a month, and it has to do with the most improved attendance for the month of January. It's actually very competitive. I meet with my principals once a month, and thanks to Cheryl, Sam Philip, and Tom Simpson, they provide guidance with the attendance, Attendance Matter Initiative, and they've been working with Peoria Public Schools just as volunteers for the last four years, providing strategies, ideas, and giving principals an opportunity to write for grants, to kind of continue to be creative in their buildings. It's somewhat competitive, but it's fun. So we have three winners this month, and we all know that the attendance rate is important because students are more likely to succeed in academics when they attend school consistently. So I've not seen this gains, this huge gains, in a long time, and so I've just been really pleased because we know January is actually very, very tough for us. It's, it's flu season, and for example, we usually have about seven, eight schools in our ninety-five club for a particular month, for the month of January. We only have one school, and that's Washington gifted with a ninety-six point seven seven percentage. So I know the other schools are suffering with, you know, the, you know, just the flu season. But anyway, out of our twenty-seven schools, we have three schools that should be recognized, that we're recognizing this evening for just having exemplary outcomes for the month of January, and I'm sure it's because of their continued, the staff, students, parents, administrators, principals of their innovative strategies that they utilize in. So we have, again, three, third place, second place, first place. Von Steuben is coming in in third place. They, they, they experienced a three percent, three point three percent increase, so they moved from eighty-eight percent to ninety-one percent. So that's really awesome, they're in the nineties. And these percentages, I mean, just one percent increase for attendance, it's very hard to do. So just imagine, not one, not two, but over three percent, that's amazing. So congratulations to Von Steuben. Our second place winner is Sterling, almost four percent, but it's a three point nine seven increase. So last year, this time, January, they had a, their attendance rate for that month was eighty-seven percent, and this past January, well, this past month, it's, it was ninety-one percent. So again, they saw a three point nine seven increase, and with it, it's really amazing. I'm not sure how Ms. Dagnan did it with her team. Hopefully, she'll share that with us. I don't think I've seen a five point three seven increase. So last year around, last year, January, you were at eighty, eighty-five point seven seven percent, and this past month, ninety-one point one percent. So that's amazing. Let's give them all a nice round of applause. And I see Mrs. Steele is here for Von Steuben, and who's, I'm sorry, for, who's here for Von Steuben? Oh, oh, sorry, sorry, team. Come on, Dr. J, bring your team, come on up. And Ms. Steele, come on up also for Sterling, and then Ms. Dagnan, come on up, and then we'll go three, two, one. Dr. J, just share with us some of your strategies and congratulations.
Thank you. I brought Ms. Johnson with me. She-
Hi, Ms. Johnson.
Yeah, we probably recognize Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
So we do a number of things. One thing that we do is every student who is on time for a week gets a free uniform pass on Tuesday for the, for the following week. And we also, for classrooms who get a hundred percent attendance, when they spell Vikings, the whole class gets a free uniform day. Ms. Johnson keeps track of classroom percents, and at the end of the month, the classroom with the highest percentage of attendance, Ms. Johnson cooks them breakfast, so that's a nice treat. Ms. Johnson also does a check-in and check-out with those kids in our high yellow and our red students, so makes that daily connection and meets with them. And she also has a lunch group called Connecting the Dots, where she'll pull the kids in and have lunch with them and, you know, keep them motivated, so. Am I missing anything?
That's great. That's awesome. I'd like to join you for breakfast.
Yeah.
Because we do, thank you. We have sauce, we have fish, fried potatoes, we cook. Knowing you, I know you're going all the way.
Yes, and the kids love that competition. They love it. They get on each other. We want to win this month, and you know, Ms. Johnson be good for them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job. Sterling Middle School.
Well, first of all, I mean, we've been really, really trying to make sure we brought home every single banner this year. So congratulations to Whittier. That five, over five percent's amazing, but I actually wanted, I talked to Ms. Lane, I said, I, I felt like we needed to really just thank you, Dr. Kratt, and the school board for this recognition every month, because there's two things that Sterling's really, really tried to work on so far this school year, and it's evident that attendance has been one of them. So rather than get up here and tell you the same things that we've been doing every single month, I wanted to take the time to thank you guys for the recognition, because I feel like it's human nature to always kind of focus on the things that aren't going well or the things that we want to improve, which of course, we need to do that in schools, focus on it, but this recognition every month has been very, it's been good for our building. And when I was thinking about that today, and I was like walking in, out of classrooms and in our in-school suspension room and so forth, and I realized how empty it was in there, I wanted to look at the two things that we've really, really worked on strategically as a team at Sterling this year. Attendance, one of them, and we've been here every month. So I feel like it's evident that we're working on that, and our kids are coming to school more, and I feel like that's because we've really focused on a culture of caring in our building, and really had to focus in on restorative practices in our building. And because of those two things, and I wanted to look at just our discipline, because if kids are coming to school more, we want to make sure that they're in the classrooms more, and I started to look at that, and I looked at our referral rates and stuff from last year as well. We've decreased it by seven hundred and ninety-four and the forty-seven percent. So not only are our kids coming to school, but they're also staying out of trouble more than they have in the past. I mean, last year, we decreased a ton, and this year, it's quite a bit more. And even our suspensions, both in-school and out-of-school, we've decreased those by forty-one percent. So the things that we're really working on, we're seeing huge gains in attendance, we're seeing big decreases in behavior problems in our, our focus this whole second semester that is making sure we start to see some bigger gains in academics. But the things that we've really started to focus on there as, as a team, we've seen growth in, and it shows because our kids are wanting to come to school. They're in school, and they're staying out of trouble, doesn't mean things are perfect, but it's important that we focus on positives, and I feel like this is a, a great thing that, that you guys do every month, and, and we appreciate it, and, and although we're sad we don't get to take the banner home, we are, we are happy for you guys, so thank you. Thank you.
I'll tell you, Ms. Steele is absolutely correct. Ms. Steele, we're proud of you, and Ms. Lane, Principal Lane, all the kids, and your staff. We have been looking at your stats. I always say in God we trust, everybody else brings data. And so we, we have been monitoring your data, and you're right, your attendance is up significantly, and then discipline, but it's beautiful.
We just figure the next logical step, and then we start to see, if they're there on a day, for a regular basis, or just in the classroom, and that stuff is going up, really starts to push that we're in the hands of the people. So we're in our direction. We're proud of you, and the team is sharing some pride.
Well, thank you, and we, we also are working on the culture and welcoming students every day. We tell them we miss them when they're not here. We have lots of incentives going on, and just so proud when we see stuff like this happening. Kudos to our staff for always welcoming students, say, remembering their names, saying, you know, hi, glad you're here. We try to say three hellos before a student even gets to the classroom every day, and it's just a good place to be, and we appreciate this. Thank you, thank you, Peoria. Thank you.
Next, we have a district presentation. And I'll call forward Mr. Kuhn to give an update on Woodruff Career and Technical Center.
Would you like me to go here or down below?
Whatever suits you.
Welcome, Ms. King. I didn't see you hiding back there.
Pause, hide.
First, I want to thank President Adler, the board, and Dr. Kratt for inviting me to come and speak on behalf of February, which is Career and Tech Month. So we're excited to do that. One of the things that Dr. Kratt and I talked about is kind of what's changed at Woodruff. So kind of want to go over, first slide here, kind of talks about the programs came in two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen, when Dr. Kratt came, then kind of where we're at right now in two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty. And as you can see, some of the courses are the same, some of the courses have left, but there's actually been, you know, when you look at the programs that aren't at Woodruff anymore, two of the programs I might want to point out is Engineering's at Peoria High, and then the Pro Metal Fabricating, they actually turned in the manufacturing program at Manuel. So it's not like they went away, they just went away from Woodruff, basically, and went into areas where they were more defined. So you could, I'll, won't go over all these, but you can see the programs that we've added. The newest program was, this year was the IT Coding Program, which has been a good starting point. We have a teacher that's actually has a degree in IT from Bradley, so it's been very positive for the students, so want to keep going. So one of the things I would just kind of want to go over, some of the things that we do at Woodruff that's kind of changed over the five years is, in the past, Woodruff was taught by instructors that really weren't certified in CTE. So when I came on board, that was one of the things that Mr. Welch and I basically went through and went through to make sure all of our teachers, not just in Woodruff, but in the other schools, that if they were teaching a career and tech program, they needed to be certified with the state of Illinois. That's how we get some of our funding for our district, so that was one of the things that was very important for me to start with. We also partner with industry, so when they had the Caterpillar program for manufacturing, you know, we had IT, or had people from Caterpillar actually come in here and give us instruction on that. We've done that at Woodruff, we've partnered with ICC, they've helped us with curriculum as well as dual credit. That wasn't done in the past. And the students are actually earning industry-recognized credentials that they can use and go on. Next slide. One of the other things we're doing, and this is kind of a nudge from Dr. Kratt from last year, was if our student's going to go out and get a job, whether they're going to continue at Woodruff or go beyond, they need to start off with the idea of creating a resume. And the resume aspect of when you start a resume, you know, I look at it as more of a skill-based aspect, because our students all have skills, but they look at it and say, gosh, I, you know, I need to put down on the resume what I did, where I work. It's not necessarily true. So, you know, and I looked at Chef Yeti's, she tailored her resumes right for hospitality. So it looks a little differently than some people's. So it's not a standard bullet point where they're going through. Last month, I was able to come to the board and talk about Goodwill. Goodwill's been a big portion of that. You know, they've been a great partner for us, we're students now, if they don't want to, if they work with us, when they graduate, they want to go to Goodwill and, and retool their resume, they can go to Goodwill and help out there. So I can't say enough about that. Students take part in supplemental learning opportunities. This can be an internship, a job shadow, even a field trip to a certain point as an experience. So a lot of things that we're doing at Woodruff that's really helped students educate themselves about what's out there. When we're looking for certifications, one thing that we see in every student, and even some of, some of the people in our community, we just don't understand what employers are expecting. One of the things that we looked at when we were presented with the Soft Skills High program, which was Cindy Ryman, which was a graduate from Ridge Woods, came to Dr. Kratt, was that two years ago, Dr. Kratt, when you ran into her in Florida? And it was something that Cindy Ryman had this program, had this idea, and she actually worked with the, with the staff at Woodruff and basically created this program. And it's now used nationwide, she's probably got four or five countries using it, about six states, and it comes with a credential that students earn. So it's, you know, it's a great asset for our students. We have a, we have roughly, a little under four hundred students in our building. Right now, we're over about two twenty-five, so about half of our students have actually earned that credential this year. So it's, it's pretty powerful. Now, we have a direct entry into workforce now, based on with the resume, with the Soft Skills High, everything's tied into going into the workforce. If that includes college, that's fine, but if students want to go right into the workforce, we have partnerships with employers. I can't say enough good things that data will show in a later slide of our work-based learning program. We had, well, I'll wait till I get this slide, but we, we had basically fifteen students that finished, completed the program last year. Eight of those students are now working in the workforce, working for one of the trade unions. So I mean, it's pretty powerful. Woodruff is recognized as a positive in the community. I don't know if you guys had a chance to see, last Thursday was the Blue Point, or two weeks ago, the Blueprint for Success, I can't say it, Blueprint for Success at HOI that highlighted Woodruff, Manuel, Brett Elliott was on there from Ridge Woods. But it was just something that was very positive that talked about that workforce. We're very fortunate, Scott from Peoria Journal Star was here, he did a big piece on Woodruff last year. So I mean, we're on the front page. So that's things that weren't happening at Woodruff, you know, five years ago. It was not looked at as a positive site in this, in this district, so have to say that. Again, we go back to the certifications. Last year, we ended up with a hundred and ninety-five certifications. Some of these students actually earned more than one certification, which was kind of interesting. The work-based learning students earned five certifications. So they were, you know, that's just something that's unheard of, but we were very, well, I'm sorry.
Certainly.
Certainly. So one of the things, like in work-based learning, when we partnered with the state of Illinois, they said we want to have an industry credential. Well, we wanted to have the Soft Skills High, so that's the first thing they go through. They go through a CPR certification, and we're trying to figure out how to embed that in the rest of our programs, because let's face it, if you're on the job site, someone is having a heart attack, somebody's got to be there to step up. So we actually just hired an instructor for our health occupations that's certified in CPR, so we're trying to embed that in next year. In work-based learning, we also have, we have a OSHA thirty certificate. Well, we have a core credential certificate. So with all those certificates, just in work-based learning, every student out of the twenty-three students we have in there, every single one of them earns five certificates. So we have a CNA. I, I just got a text from Ms. Davis, our CNA teacher, that now we've had ten students in, in the program for CNA first semester, that the last student retook the test, now we have a hundred percent that have passed CNA this month. So I mean, that's something positive again that's going on. So that's just an idea, some of their certificates, health, what is it, I always say it wrong, it's Serve Safe Certificate for Culinary, and that means they become a manager of a restaurant. So I mean, that's something powerful. All of our juniors finish that at the end of the year, that's the last thing they do before they finish the course. So if we're looking at now two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, now that number's gone up to three hundred and five. And I have to say, a lot of it, if you look at it, two hundred of it, that's our Soft Skills High certificate, but that's something that our employers are asking for. So, next slide, please. So then if we go into talking about internships, last year, we had students complete sixty-two internships. This year, right now, we're at sixty-two internships, but then we have another twenty-three that are actually employed that not, are not part of an internship program that we currently have. One thing that you look at is a lot of our students that work for our district actually work, and they have to work to support their family. So it's important to support our students because some of them start in an entry-level position, and if they move their way up, again, going into the workforce, paying for money to go to college, but a lot of them, again, are supporting, helping to support their families. Next slide. So this is our work-based learning slide, and we talked about this, part of the things that have made Woodruff successful is, again, Dr. Kratt nudging her, when I first became principal, she says, hey, what are you doing on, in June? I said, well, I was going to take a day off, have the month off, and she says, can you meet us in Chicago because we got this grant that we applied for? And it's with the Department of Commerce, we're, we're the only school district in the state of Illinois that has this grant. We're the only organization south of Route eighty that's had this grant the second time. No one else has had it. And they're going to do the grant again, and they said, you guys are applying, right? And we just shake our head and say, yeah. But this was one of the things that they have actually pushed us into, really preparing students for the workforce. So the last program we were doing, which expires in July first, is the work-based learning program, and this was again, Dr. Kratt pushing us to move away from perfect, where we had six to eight kids in a year, now we have twenty-three kids out in internships this year.
You've been a nice job hiring Sarah.
So, yes. And that's, and that was the nice thing, is because of these, the extra funds that we're getting from the Department of Commerce, we were able to hire a career coordinator. And Sarah goes out and she recruits employers, you know, she goes and meets with employers, she's, she actually goes out with students, whether they need help with housing, clothes, you name it, she goes out and helps them out. We were, we were very fortunate to snag Sarah from really one of the support organizations, and she's, she's a licensed social worker, so she goes out and helps her services with a lot of things. But, but going back to this, last year, we had fifteen students in there, and working with West Central Trades, we have now have eight students in the union. The nice thing about this is we had some students that did an intern- The nice thing about this is, we had some students that did an internship in construction, but they really kind of want to go into painting. So, we're across the board. It's not, every student is not just in construction. We have one student that's in the Bricklayers, we have one student that's in the Painters' Union, we have one student, I think he's now in the Electrical Union. So, it's, it's across the board. And I will say this, I can't, you know, thank Clint Dury and Jimmy Dillon, because they've really helped us to open those doors up. So, that's one thing I wanted to point out to all of you, that, that, thank you for that support last year, because it's, it's really helped, really has.
Maybe we can recognize them sometime in the future.
That'd be great. So, one thing Dr. Karat asked me to do last year at the State of the Schools, was start figuring out how we can document things that's happened. So, this is a surprise for Dr. Karat. What we did was, we created a video for our IT program. So, this gives you a shot of some of our students in the classroom, working with our new teacher. So, Mr. Thomas, can you show it on up? So, our goal at Woodruff is to create a video for each one of our programs, really use it as a marketing tool to try to get students back into the programs, but really to share with all of you and share with the community. Our goal is to put this on our website, so anybody in the community can look at it in the access. Actually, there goes the next video. So, this was, actually, if you want to play it, this is our Criminal Justice video that was completed. You can see, these are just basically quick videos, so we're going to try to put it together where it's all in one for you, for your State of the Schools.
Did he do those for you?
Yes, he did. Yes, he did. So, one thing I do want to point out before I go, is I mentioned the dual credit classes, and I didn't mention that there's four programs currently in dual credit. We also have what they call articulated credit with culinary. Students don't get dual credit, but if they go to ICC, they then do get the dual credit. So, they have to join their program. The advantage of that is, our program's curriculum is actually stronger than ICC's, because we use the Illinois Restaurant Associations, and we didn't want to follow their curriculum, we wanted to use our own. And that allows us to compete in Pro Start and everything else. So, they said, well, we'll do one better. If the students are going there, we'll give them credit. So, just wanted to point that out. I want to say thank you to Thomas Barb and the rest of the administration that has really helped us at Woodruff grow. We couldn't have done it without your administrative team. Mrs. Sands been a great asset for us. But all of you supporting Woodruff, I mean, we couldn't have done all this without everyone working together.
I just read a note that the committee met, and they're going to give scholarships. Are you proud of that? Mr. Wolden, you sent that to me?
So, I did. So, Woodruff's been closed since 2010, but every Monday of the month, the Woodruff High School alumni still meets at Woodruff. And they fund a scholarship for students go to college. They have six $500 scholarships they pay for, and they pay for six $250 scholarships for students for material going into the trades. And, I mean, that's something that they do, they want to give back to us, and they still meet there every month. So, I try to attend their meetings. It's usually on the first Monday or first Tuesday in the month. So, that's my last report, I was sharing that with you, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any board questions for Mr. Coon? All right. Thank you for presenting.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have presentations by audience. We do have rules for presenting the board. They're on our website or by the comment box. Suffice it to say, we ask that you keep any criticism of the district constructive, so that we can continue to improve, and also please abide by the five-minute rule. First up is Mr. Terry Knapp.
First of all, I'd like to thank the board again for the bulletin boards you put up. It wasn't very long ago, 10 years ago, that Lathan was here as superintendent, and for the first three months, none of those boards were filled. And now those boards had anything on them, and I really appreciate, as a citizen and taxpayer, the fact that you spend some time dressing it up, and I'm sure the kids are incorporated in it. I want to also thank Mick Willis and Dr. Karat for the negotiations they performed. I know the board should be thanked as well, because it didn't happen without the board okaying it. This was a departure from the norm, and I didn't get a chance to really talk too much about it last time, but, you know, in 2000, you spent over $250,000 on attorneys to be at the table. We bargained for 11 months, we had probably 30 meetings that required 12 teachers to be released with subs, and 12 administrators to be released, or administrative people on the other side. It sounds like that didn't have to occur. It sounds like the culture has changed, and teachers around the area noticed that. Not only in Peoria, but the other teachers that you're trying to recruit understand that, and they're more apt to come here if you want them to come here. It's a very positive thing, and interest-based bargaining is important, and it sounds like it's alive and well, and it's, kudos to you. I want to mention, I had talked before I went on vacation about filing some class action activity. I talked to several attorneys, and we all agreed, finally, that we should go to the state first. And we are making that effort to go to the state, because that is in the court system. I've talked about that before. You've got to use your grievance procedure, and you've got to go through your contract, and the state is another step in that area, and we feel we need to go to the state first. I think it's very important to you to understand. I was on a radio show, and the radio commentator asked me, he says, well, really, what harm does it do to not do IEPs for three years and not have any special ed teachers? And I mentioned to you before that Mimi McDonald, if she were here and alive, you would be in court. There would be no doubt about it. She sued the district many times, 20, 25, 30 years ago, she had special ed children. And the commentator asked me, he said, well, what do you think it's really worth to the kids if you had a class action suit? If it was my child, and if it was your child, that went three years without special ed IEPs and without special ed teachers, I think it's worth a million dollars a kid. If I were sitting on a jury and had to hand out a verdict, as a teacher who knows something about the laws and what you're supposed to provide children, special ed kids just aren't chattel. You just don't discard them and push them over in the corner. I couldn't believe the reaction when your attorney sat in the, down here in the, whatever you call it, the horseshoe, and said that they had broken the law for three straight years, and IEPs, the people that were doing the IEPs weren't even in that school, and the people that were doing the IEPs didn't even meet with the kids. I mean, that, that is egregious. I can't let that go. I mean, that's just something you need to understand. The administration told you in an uncertain situation that you, they had broken the law, and still, four of you voted to give them an extra million dollars and give them two more years. You know, and the damage has been done. The damage has been done when you go three years, and the last year, you have 60% of the teachers not even certified. You had heard a great presentation from the principal of Woodruff. Outstanding programs, outstanding programs going on. The choice is already here. You don't have to give more choice, especially to a school that produces 2% college-ready kids. That's just not appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Ms. Sharon Cruz.
Congratulations to Woodruff and Peoria. In the last 25 years, many families have left Peoria Public Schools. Some have left Peoria. We have fewer students, fewer schools, and fewer teachers, but an increasing number of school and Wisconsin Avenue administrators who have not yet offered any viable solutions to the discipline problems that are the cause of academic problems. No teaching or learning can take, or little teaching and learning can take place until you find a way to end classroom discipline disruptions. I was pleased to find that an Eric Digest article states, agrees stating, "School discipline has two main goals: ensure the safety of staff and students, and create an environment conducive to learning. Less dramatic problems may not threaten personal safety, but they still negatively affect the learning environment. Disruptions interrupt lessons for all students, and disruptive students lose even more learning time." Meaningful consequences for those who create classroom discipline disruptions have to consist of academic requirements, in my opinion. Conferences with these students should convince them that they are stealing learning time from their classmates, as well as from themselves. The consequences should be considered payback for the education time lost. The consequences also should result in the students realizing that they are capable of controlling their own behavior, and thus making them proud of themselves. My suggestion is that disrupting students be assigned to in-school suspension, that they be given homework, preferably the same work assigned to their class, that they must work the entire hour with no communication with other students, and that the work be turned in at the end of the hour or the next day. The work must be turned in before they can return to class. If these requirements are met, these students will be given full credit for their work. The assigned work and the decision as to whether or not their behavior meets standards when they return should be entirely up to the teacher. If the work is not completed, and the behavior doesn't improve, disrupting students should get zero, not a forty, for the work assigned, even if it is completed. While they were out of class, stolen time must be paid back. The work completed, good behavior, and the teacher's praise should convince students that they are capable of controlling their behavior and make them proud of their success. If the policy works, the teacher will be able to return to teaching instead of losing time disciplining. I hope that you will ask your teachers for their ideas to meet the goals of encouraging students to control their own behavior. I agree that students will be less disruptive if learning is exciting and/or interesting. However, for the last 25 years, discipline problems have taken away the time needed to make teaching effective. Eric recommends that rules and consequences for breaking them should be clearly specified and communicated to staff, students, and parents effectively. Allowing sufficient time for implementation is also important. New disciplinary practices often fail due to the unrealistic time expectations. Teacher input is especially important, because their support is crucial to a plan's success, end of quotes. I do not believe my ideas for consequences will work for students who either do not have the skills to succeed at the level required in the class, or for some reason or other do not care if they pass or fail. Some of, some of your other programs have to kick in when such students are discovered, but they should not be allowed to disrupt class. In my opinion, administrations have found ways to give students higher grades, but have done little to encourage learning that would make students college-ready. Students can get low grades and still learn if teaching occurs. However, administrators have found ways to give students higher grades without giving teachers the support needed to control the discipline so that they could impart knowledge. Discipline problems that disrupt teaching in lower grades have prevented many students from achieving at the, at the lower level, at the appropriate level. And anyway, you've got the rest of my speech in front of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Glenn Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Adler. Board Chair Adler, Superintendent Karat, board members. My name is Glenn Ross, and I'm the chair of the Quest Charter Academy Board. And I'd like today to give you a brief update on the contract negotiations for Quest Charter Academy reauthorization. But first of all, I'd like to congratulate you and your team on the successful conclusions of the recent contract with the teachers and other members of Peoria Public Schools. It was very, very well done. I'd like to let you know that we have had ongoing discussions with the Peoria Public Schools teams. We have exchanged three versions of the contract between the Peoria Public Schools team and Quest. The contracts were principally based on previous agreements that we've used successfully, and with some additions and some modifications. Following our January contract meeting, a discussion, a decision was taken to form sub-teams to, with subject matter experts from each side to analyze and define recommendations and processes for addressing the remaining wishes and concerns. Today, we had a very productive sub-team meeting covering personnel and finance items, and I want to thank Dr. Ikajaku and his finance team and personnel team, including Mr. Willis, Mr. McKenzie, and Ms. Hammer for their leadership. I'd like to thank them for their leadership, for working with us through the details. But we're not done yet. We're not done yet. So, today, I'd like to respectfully request the support and assistance of the Peoria Public School Board in driving the agreement to an amicable and a timely conclusion, very hopefully in the February timeframe. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Responses to audience presentations. Dr. Karat.
Thank you, President Adler. Thank you to Mr. Knapp for his various comments. And Ms. Cruz, thank you for all the research. I actually love Eric. Reminds me of my graduate studies, so you have some really good pieces there, so I'll continue to take a look at it. I do like the direction that the district has headed into in terms of the focus on the whole child, and, which is not only academics and physical, but also socially emotional, that's really important. All of the investment that we've put in with the Wraparound Center and Coach Booth is around. We have all these, I think they're 10 organizations, from probation to OSF to Unity Point to Chestnut, Counseling, Food Pantry, and all the amazing things that are happening. We have Lions Quest, we have Panorama Screeners. We have Lions Quest, we have Panorama Screeners, our teachers are well-trained, we're doing some work with Arrie and Michelle Carmichael, in terms of cultivating a culture of care and concern. Our last School Improvement Day, that was a huge focus, and the investment with Family Court, Children's Home, and all of those other supports and entities that are working with us, and the investment with Social Emotional AIDS in primary school. It's working, and we're moving in the right direction. I think district-wide, our discipline is down by 14%, and you heard from Sterling and Ms. Still, who's the assistant principal, how those numbers are looking for that individual schools. So, it's definitely a big focus for us, for sure, and we'll continue to work at it, but our investments are definitely working, so thank you for continuing to sort of nudge, and I appreciate that. And then, the last piece, I, you know, the board hired a superintendent and delegated the board's representative regarding this negotiation, and so, it's, it is, that's how we definitely need to continue it. The board is not involved with day-to-day actions, so we will continue to work on getting Quests to come to the board, actually, come to the table with us. They've, they were not able to meet a couple of times, but we're meeting, which is great. They're meeting with my team, so that's fantastic. We were waiting to get some dates for the academic team to meet, so we would love to get some response from your team, so that we can meet and put this thing, put this thing, put this baby to rest. The goal was to get it done in January, so we're waiting on you to do that. And as soon as we get it to a place, the board has given me a directive to work with the Quest team, and bring a product together for review and discussion and approval. So, that's what we're working on, and the finance committee met today, as Mr. Ross mentioned, and there's still, there were some check-offs on some items, and some items not, but progress is being made, so, I'm sorry, I've been long-winded, you ask for feedbacks, I hope that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Adler.
Mr. Walter.
Just a response, basically, to what Mr. Knapp said about the salary settlement, how it went smoothly with that, and I do, again, want to give credit to the superintendent and Mr. Willis for making that work. I do still substitute, and I've been at Dunlap for the last two weeks, and I've had several teachers come up to me and said, "Don't think we didn't notice that, that both the shortness of the time and the amount of the settlement." And it does, I mean, it's going to put pressure on some other schools, other school people and stuff with it, to take a look at this, take a look at Peoria Public Schools, because this is a good place to work, and that, without that acrimony that you have in law negotiations and stuff with it, that's in a message too, because one of the people who talked to me was on their negotiating team, and she said, "I'm just really impressed if you could do that." And I said, "It was the leadership from you two, but it was the seven of us on the board that supported that direction." So, I just want to thank you again for what you did.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have some information items. Proposed expenditures over $2,500. Any questions for Mr. Willis on the list? Seeing none. Dr. Karat, report of requests under the Freedom of Information Act.
Thank you, President Adler. Since our last board meeting on January 27th, we received three new requests, and of those, two has been filled, and one request still pending. There was also two pending requests noted on January 27th. Of those, one has been filled, and one is pending. We have received, to date, 23 requests, again, for this calendar year, at a cost of $350. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is our consent agenda. Vice President Shaw, would you read it for us?
President Adler, tonight's consent agenda consists of the following. Item number one, gifts to the school district tonight, $80,916. Year-to-date, $287,263.42. Item number two, payment of bills. Item number three, payment for travel. Item number four, board travel request. Item number five, human resources report. Item number six, field trip approval, Woodruff Career and Technical Center Culinary Arts Class, Chicago, Illinois. Item number seven, field trip approval, Woodruff Career and Technical Center Culinary Arts Class, Springfield, Illinois. Item number eight, field trip approval, Peoria High School's, Peoria High Social Studies Class, St. Louis, Missouri. Item number nine, field trip approval, Harrison Sixth Grade Class Trip. And item number 10, Roosevelt Magnet HVAC. And that is the entirety of the consent agenda.
Thank you, Vice President Shaw. Are there any items that board members would like pulled for a separate vote? All right. Seeing none, can I have a motion and a second to adopt the entire consent agenda?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Wilson. Go ahead. You got it.
Mrs. Kastig. Aye. Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Mr. Claus.
Aye.
Mr. Walter.
Aye.
Mr. Shaw.
Aye.
Mr. Adler.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion care.
All right, thank you.
I didn't want to pull anything, but I had a question on one of the items, but it's too late to ask that.
With the board's consent to suspend the rules, we'll offer the floor to Mr. Walter for a little bit.
Just a question for Mr. Willis. The HVAC on Roosevelt Magnet, when we complete that, will we have completed all the schools to have air conditioning?
No, there are two more schools that will do summer 21.
Okay. That is it? That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Next up is the deliberation agenda. He's reading.
Expulsions. 提出的 action is that the expulsions listed on the report dated February 10, 2020, be approved as presented.
Item has been moved and seconded. Would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Kastig. Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Mr. Claus.
Aye.
Mr. Walter.
Aye.
Mr. Shaw.
Aye.
Mr. Adler.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion care.
Number 12, expulsion with the expulsion held in abeyance. Proposed action is that the expulsion with the expulsion held in abeyance, listed on the report dated February 10, 2020, be approved as presented.
Second. Item has been moved and seconded. He said second.
Mrs. Kastig. Aye. Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Mr. Claus.
Aye.
Mr. Walter.
Aye.
Mr. Shaw.
Aye.
Mr. Adler.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion care.
All right, thank you. Any presentations or suggestions by board members?
Just one.
Mr. Shaw.
One follow-up to Mr. Walter's question. The sales tax projects, Mr. Willis will give two reports. There'll be one spring report that will detail everything that's happening, everything that's in flight, and everything that's happened, and then in the fall, it'll be another report. So, there'll be two reports we'll give that will update everyone on the projects.
Thank you.
Any reports from board committees? Mr. Walter.
Policy Committee will be meeting Thursday, February 20th, at 3:30 here in the Administration Building.
Anything else? Yep, go ahead.
Building Committee, Thursday, February 20th, at 2:00 p.m.
Very good.
Teacher-advisory committee will be meeting March 12, at 4:00.
Very good. Anything else for the good of the public? Seeing none, we adjourn. 7:29.